Good evening, we would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody who is here in council chambers.
We have an equator today.
Okay. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 17, 2024. I would like to thank all of you for your patience as we were over the County Board of Supervisors Auditorium for a special presentation to for recognizing Tarek Scoobal. And most of you know him, he received the Cy Young Award and we recognized him for that award and as being a Kingmanite and a special occasion. And actually auditorium was probably at least half full, a lot of little leaguers. It was a great event and once again, we appreciate your patience. I'll turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate with us in our invocation to stand. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Peter Ernst with the Family Bible Church and after which I have asked Counselor Dykens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council for the privilege of bringing the invocation. Father God, we thank you for your divine providence in giving us the privilege to live here in Kingman, Arizona. Thank you for enriching our lives in this great constitutional republic. We give thanks to you as our Creator for life, liberty, and the gospel message of your Son. We give thanks to you for watching over us in spite of many in our nation who have sought to expel you from our government. Thank you, Lord God, for our mayor and city council that still allows an invocation to be given before their meetings. Help us this day as decisions are made that affect all of us. I pray for those that you've placed an authority over us and ask your help in helping them make wise and righteous decisions for the people of this great city. I pray that you would guide them in your wisdom found within the pages of holy scripture. I humbly pray for our Mayor Ken Watkins, our city council, our Chief of Police, and the rest of the Kingman Police Department. Protect those who serve in our fire department and all public servants of Kingman, Arizona. Help us to do better in leaving behind a greater legacy of liberty and freedom for our children and grandchildren. In this Advent season, we humbly give you thanks for your indescribable gift, the gift of the Lord Jesus. May this prayer be acceptable in your sight. We humbly pray in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Now because you have been so patient and many of you are here for item 4A on our agenda, we're going to move that forward to right now. And so I'm going to turn, because of a conflict that I have, I'm going to turn time over to our Vice Mayor and excuse myself. And once again, thanks for your patience tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Item 4A, public hearing, ordinance number 1950, increase to residential and commercial solid waste rates. The solid waste system is operated as its own business unit and the solid waste rate payers fully fund its operations, maintenance, and capital costs. To ensure that sufficient revenues are being generated to cover the costs of operating and maintaining the system, the five-year financial plan is evaluated and updated, if necessary, annually. In performing the 2024 review of the systems financial plan, it was determined that existing revenues will not be sufficient in the next few years to cover operating costs and truck replacements or maintain a 60-day cash reserve target level. As the October 15 council meeting, a notice of intent to consider increasing solid waste rates and to set a December 17 public meeting date was approved. Staff recommends council adopt ordinance number 1950. Welcome, Ms. Molly.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and good evening and good evening, council members. Annie's helping me as she helps all of us get my presentation together. But tonight is the public hearing for the solid waste rate increase and so I'm going to dive right into the presentation. It's a very similar presentation as what we shared back in October. So let's talk a little bit just about the basics of the solid waste system. So it does act as a separate business unit, meaning that it is an enterprise fund and that it is paid entirely by user fees. So taxpayers do not pay for the system. There are about 14,000 customers in the solid waste that we provide solid waste system, that we provide solid waste service to. 13,000 are residential and we do have about 1,000 customers that we provide commercial service to. We do provide that service to customers who are inside the city limits. We are required by our regulations to provide residential service. However, commercial customers have a choice. They are not required to use the city service, but we still have 1,000 commercial customers that use our service.
Erin. Erin, can you clear that for me?
It wants to update something, so.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Erin.
So I want to, let's look at our current rates, what we're charging our customers and I want to talk quickly about how we got to this point. So back in 2020, we performed a very comprehensive cost-to-service study and adjusted the rates at that time. The council approved of a rate increase. Anytime that we're performing a cost-to-service study or any sort of rate study, we look at it on a longer-term basis. So we look at a five-year financial plan. At that time, there were certainly increases that were being proposed. The council adopted the very first year. And there were four years that we expected to bring back to you some sort of increase. As we looked at the financial plan, we thought that we were going to need to increase the rates. However, as we've looked at the financial plan, we've not had to do so and the rates have stayed the same since July of 2020. And this is the current rate structure. I did provide some additional information on this table about three different services that we have not provided for quite a few years. And so although it was adopted as part of our rate structure, those fees are no longer in effect. We don't offer those services. So I talked about, a little bit about a financial plan update and why it's important. And so every year, we look at that five-year financial plan to make sure that the revenues that we're generating are going to cover the costs of the system. So the operating cost, we have the monies to replace aging fleet and that we can continue to meet our cash reserve target, which currently is 60 days. And of course, we want to continue to provide the level of service that our customers have become accustomed to providing. So we've done that in the past and we continue to do that today. What are the primary costs of the solid waste system? Well, it's very different from our water and wastewater system. There's really just a handful of costs that make up the majority of the costs to solid waste. 25% of the financial plan's costs are comprised of personnel costs. The landfill and fuel are almost 25% as well. We spend almost a million dollars a year in landfill costs. And then we have our trucks. Our trucks are anywhere from 10% to 15% of our total cost for the system. And then because our fleet is so aging, our solid waste department is the largest contributor to our fleet services department, who is a department that repairs and maintains our fleet. So all of these costs comprise 80% of our solid waste system's overall costs. So talking about fleet, sometimes it's better to just have a visual. We always talk about our aging fleet. Sometimes it's easier to see that when we can show the picture of what that aging fleet looks like. So we have about 30 vehicles or 30 heavy trucks in our fleet. Of those, eight serve commercial customers. We have 19 that we use for our residential customers. Some of them are backups, but we have 19 in that fleet. And then we have four that we use for other services. So when we look at the age of our commercial vehicles, for instance, we have eight of them and almost all of them are well over 10 years old with over 200,000 miles on them. In our residential, we've been grateful that the council adopted a vehicle replacement program. So we've been able to replace some of those older units. So we do have some newer units, but you'll see that a majority of them are over 10 years old. On the right side of the screen, you see the replacement schedule. So although we've been able to replace some units, there are a lot of units still to go. And so over the next five years, what's currently being funded are eight replacement units. But you'll see that eight doesn't necessarily take care of all of the fleet. And so actually, I think it takes until fiscal year 31 to get all of the units replaced. I do want to point out that there, other than just having a newer fleet, reduced fleet costs with aging fleet, that there's another perk to having newer trucks. And that is that currently, when we dispose of a vehicle, so let's say the residential unit that is 25 years old, it's so old that it doesn't get sold in public auction. We end up just taking it to scrap and getting about $3,000 in scrap metal proceeds for that. But if you have a unit that is 10 years old, let's say, with less than 200,000 miles on it, you can get anywhere from $35,000 to $90,000 in a public auction for that, which is, depending on the range, is close to a debt service payment for one of those newer vehicles. So just another perk, something to think about. So our current financial plan and the reason we're here this evening is that as we evaluate the current financial plan, the dark, you'll notice that by 2025, the dark green line, which are our revenues, and the light green line, which are our expenditures, tend to have a gap. And that gap gets further and further apart over the next five years. The orange line are our cash reserves. So the goal is to maintain 60 days of cash reserves, which we are currently doing. But by 2027, we'll be at about 30 days of cash reserves. So instead of bringing to you in 2027 some sort of large rate increase that for our solid waste customers, we want to bring to you this evening more of a smoothing type of rate, so some small increments over the next few years to get us to where we need to be by 2027. So we're looking, we looked at a few different options. We talked about a few different options in October. So we talked about, let's reduce our cash reserves to what the minimum amount in our fund balance policy is, which is 45 days. So we looked at that option. We also looked at the option of maintaining our 60-day reserve. And then we also talked about, let's not fund eight truck replacements in five years. Let's only fund six. What does that look like? And so this is what we were able to determine. If we reduce our cash reserve target to 45 days, which is the first large table on the slide in front of you, over the next five years, we would need to increase our solid waste rates for both residential and commercial customers, anywhere from 5.35% to 5.4%. And that would be each year. That's about $1.09 or so, up to $1.36 per year. If we, if we looked at the 60-day cash reserve option, it's about 5.7% increase over the next five years. And the difference between the two is fairly nominal when you look at it in percentage as well as the dollars. And then we also said, okay, let's pull two units out of the replacement program. Does that make a difference? What we found is that because we're not replacing some of those older units, the fleet are continuing to get older and so fleet costs are going to continue to rise. So it really offsets the debt service payment for those years. So it ends up being about the same as the 45-day cash reserve and the 60-day cash reserve. So no real savings, just a different, a different way to get there. So we're bringing to you this evening the recommended option and what we heard from the council at the October meeting that they'd like us to bring back to this meeting, which is the 60-day cash reserve. And so what does that financial plan look like? Well, certainly there's still a gap between the revenues and expenditures, but they are in line with each other and we have cash reserves to make up that gap. That's the point of having those cash reserves on hand. And by the time we get to fiscal year 29, we're at that 60-day cash reserve target. So what do those rates look like in comparison to what the customers are paying today? So if we look at the residential service currently, two times a week, customers are paying $20.37 per month. Under the recommended rates, it's $21.53. All of the rates have been increased by 5.7% with the exception of the couple that you'll see that are a little bit of a different color. They're dark green and that is the basic commercial service and the one and a half cubic yard shared three-time service for commercial. And that's because those services are actually the same exact service as what our residential customers are receiving. So they are receiving a larger increase than 5.7%. We want to be sure they're paying the same that our residential customers are paying. They were paying a much lower rate in years past. And then also, we're removing the five cubic yards, six cubic yard, and the eight cubic yard services, since we no longer provide that service. No reason to have them in our rates. And lastly, the very bottom of the table, the residential extra trash. Currently, our customers are paying $25.75 per load. It's a slightly higher increase than 5.7% to get it to $27.25. We did that merely for the messaging and make it easy, 27.25 instead of 27.06 or something of that nature. So we just rounded up to make it a little bit easier on those one-time bulk pickups for our residential customers. Comparisons to other cities. So I want to just give kudos to Eddie and his team. They really reached out and tried to get as many comparisons as they could and as much data as they could from the comparison cities. There are 20 different cities on this table. We have them sorted by city name. But you'll notice that there is a column, the third column in, that we added that is titled Fee Ranking, Highest Fee = 1. So we ranked all of the fees by highest to lowest. So just to make it easy for you to compare our rates to other cities' rates, our, our rates are highlighted in a bluish green and so we are 16th on the list, so one of the lowest. You'll also notice that we looked at the number of pickups. We asked the cities, how many pickups are you doing? We asked them for other notes. So do you have weekly recycling? Are you looking at a rate increase in the near future? For instance, Lake Havasu is looking to raise their rates in January to $23.69. We also asked about their truck replacement program, if they happen to have one and if they were willing to share. And some of the cities did reply with what their truck replacement program is and whether or not the services are outsourced or city provided. So just quite a bit of different information and certainly varying. There are no standards, certainly as you look at the different, the different cities. So the next slide, which I'll move to in just a second. But at the conclusion of the October meeting, we were asked to look at once-per-week pickup. And so we've spent the last bit of time working with the solid waste team to try to get some good data so that we could provide you what that might look like. And so we did put together some figures. And I want to talk first about the assumptions that we used. And we assumed that there was going to be no curbside recycling service. We also assumed that the 60-day cash reserve target level would stay in place. We also know that if we're going to once-per-week, we know that families are going to need additional containers. And so we're assuming that we're going to charge a fee for that additional container and that the revenues generated from that container will offset any costs that are associated with that additional container. So that's also included in the assumption. We know that there are going to be some reduced costs. We had to determine what those might look like. So definitely, we're going to have reduced fleet. We're going to have some reduced personnel as well. What we realized is that there are going to be more landfill trips. So people now are going to fill up their cans and the truck is going to get fuller faster, meaning they're going to need to go to the landfill more. And since most of our mileage and fuel is because of the landfill trips, we didn't really see any sort of reduction in fuel costs. Landfill costs are the same, right? Same trash that we're needing to dispose of. So after we took all of these items into account, there is definitely a savings of close to $3. I think it's $2.70 for once-per-week versus the twice-per-week recommended rate. And assuming that an extra container is also going to cost something and we came up with the figure of $7.50. Now, some considerations to think about on the once-per-week is, one, we would have to get a waiver from the county. Not that we expect this to be an issue, but right now, we're required to provide two pickups per week. Other agencies don't do it, so we feel comfortable that we would be able to get that waiver, but we would need to go through that process. And then also, we haven't reached out to our customers yet to find out if this is an option that they might like. So we would maybe want to send out a survey. That would be the council's, the council's direction, but that is a consideration. And then, of course, overfilled containers, odors for keeping the trash in the container for a longer period, more flies and insects sort of issues with that. But certainly wanted to share this option with the council as it was, as it was requested. So the next steps, well, we are in the third step of four in this process and that is holding the public meeting. And so depending on what the council decides this evening, if a rate increase is approved, then that would go into effect February 1st. And I thank you.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions before I open up the public hearing? We can do both.
Hi Tina. You did state that commercial users have options. How would that affect that if you get a bunch of them going away from the city?
So we, that could happen at any time, right? First of all, thank you, Councilwoman Savage, for your question. And that could happen at any time. When we looked at the rates a few years ago, we, some, some, some services, we were higher. Our costs were higher. Some services, we were much lower. We did not notice a decrease in the customer base when we raised our rates last time. When we look at the rates that we, how this is going to affect the rates this time, we're still below in some areas and higher in some areas. So we still don't believe that it is a big enough of an increase that we are going to have a large impact on our commercial, in our commercial customer base. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, stay close.
Yes.
I'm going to open up the public hearing. We have a few people that have wished to speak on this item. David Bailey, if you want to come up to the podium. Welcome, sir. Would you please state your name?
My name is David Bailey. Thank you for letting me speak to the city council this evening and the residents that are here for this. I understand from time to time, there does have to be increases for lots of things. Obviously, we're doing solid waste tonight. My question is, is why can't there be a better way to implement this? Me being a senior and I live alone, I don't create that much garbage to begin with. The last time I put my can out was the day after Thanksgiving. I probably got two bags in the bottom of my can right now. So when I do put it out, I'm going to be paying for that full month. I'm paying, and it's $20 and some change per month right now, which effectively is about $5 a week. There are, there are other residents, whether it be in my neighborhood or around Kingman, that do put their cans out twice a week and a lot of the time, they're heaping. And so these people are creating a lot more garbage, a lot more trash. So I think there's a better way to implement a better system. Maybe there can be a computer chip put inside the handle that says, I'm picking up from John Smith from this week and Sue Jones, you know. And because it's getting picked up every other week or every third week, then they're getting charged for that, for the people. And, you know, there's probably going to have to be more of an increase because some people aren't putting their cans out as opposed to the people that are heaping their garbage twice a week. So maybe that rate would have to be $23 a month. I don't know what the rate would have to be. But I think there's a better way to use this system. I am a senior on a fixed budget and so every penny counts. There was a rate increase of the water earlier this year, which effectively was like 26.5%. Yes, it was only, you know, the base went from $13 to $16. So it was a $3 and some odd cent increase, but it was 26.5%. I'm going to get a 2.5% raise on my social security. I'm already in the, in the, in the red, you know, because of this. I don't think that it's fair. There needs to be a way to effectively charge people for what they're using. I'm putting mine out once a month because that's all I need to do. I should get charged for that once a month instead of every week. That's just what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hermelinda Richards. Hello, welcome.
How are you? Good evening. My name is Hermelinda Richards. I've been here in Kingman for the last five years. I moved from Las Vegas. I'm very happy living in this city. When I picked up this city, I was very blessed because this is a very tranquil and very nice city. One of my concerns here is like David, I'm in the same situation. I live alone. My trash is probably one Walmart bag a week. I never use my big trash container because I don't have especially trash. I understand the circumstances. You cannot go house by house seeing how many people live there, correct? However, one of my concerns is about the increase of this system, the trash. I don't think it's necessary because this lady who just gave us a presentation, she said that there are 13,000 residential service in 1,000 commercials. So basically, I was not too wrong. I was calculating 85% of the population with residential. I went in a very close range. I don't think that it's necessary, in my personal opinion, that it's necessary for the trash to go twice a week in a house. One single house has five, the most, four, five people. So I don't think it's necessary to go twice a week. We can reduce gas. We can reduce depreciation of the trucks. And there are other areas when we can improve the service here. Like, for example, like sending inspector to the houses, ensuring that the houses are clean because there is a lot of trash everywhere, finding people because they don't clean the houses, inspecting the new houses who are under construction following the regulations, background in its architecture. So in the times I've been around the city, I noticed that there are a lot of discrepancies, especially my neighbor. He's a hoarder and I'm concerned about fire because he doesn't clean his property. It's not that I'm complaining about him, it's my personal opinion. But I think this is very good to reduce the time that the people is going to pick up trash. Instead of bleeding our wallets, I also retire. I have my only pension and how he say- And how he say, David, say, you know, every penny counts. It's not too much increase, but I think it's another ways to help our residents to pay for the payment for the services. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gordon Sanchez? Welcome.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Gordon Sanchez. I've been a resident of Kingman since 2021, right next door to where maybe you lived for a little while anyway. I agree with the first individual and this lady too, that I don't think it's necessary to pick up twice a week. I never lived anywhere up until I lived in Kingman, where it was twice-a-week pickup for residential. There probably should be a way to maybe reduce costs instead of raising fees. I mean, it's not going to hurt me terribly, but I know that there are a lot of residents that it might affect. And from what the lady said a little earlier, it looks like they're going to raise it up to about $26.47, about $26.5 bucks by 2029. So, that's a $5 increase over five years. So, maybe there is a better way to change it instead of doing twice-a-week pickup for residential. And if those people that want to generate so much trash, maybe they should be charged a little bit more. Maybe give them two containers or three and have them picked up once a week instead of having a twice-a-week pickup. So, that's kind of my take on it.
Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Good evening, council.
Could you state your name for me, please?
Yes, I'm James Ripponin, and I live in Kingman on Robinson Avenue. Everybody's pretty much brought up the same subject I was going to talk about was one-day garbage pickup. Every city I've ever lived in only has one day of garbage pickup. We're paying for two days of garbage pickup that are three days apart. That doesn't even make sense. You talked about the waste on trucks, the wear and tear. Well, you're running the trucks twice a week. What do you expect? They're going to last a lot shorter than if you're doing them once a week. And also, I mean, if somebody needed more than one garbage can, give them another garbage can, and they can pay extra for that. But I think the majority of people, at least elderly like myself, can easily get by with one pickup a week. Also, another question. Is there any competition for garbage pickup in this town, in a regular city?
Being the public hearing, we can bring Tina back up and address your question after I close the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. That's all we have to speak on the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Moline, did you want to come up and address this question, please?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And I appreciate the citizens and our customers coming and sharing their concerns as well. And I would like to address a few of the concerns. One of the concerns was if there was a better way to implement the increase. And I looked at that, or I understood that as I shared at the beginning, we really don't need to have an increase until 2027, but we certainly want to have a smoother increase or smaller increments. And so, we're certainly trying to approach it that way. But I do understand that a 5.7% increase is a large number, and especially for those customers that don't use a lot of trash. And so, quickly, in the back, the Public Works Director and I are aware that there are some cities that are able to track usage, right? We don't have that technology right now, but they are able to do so. We quickly thought, are there different-sized cans maybe that we can offer? Currently, we don't have any of those sorts of options or the technology, but there are cities that are doing some of that. So, if that's something that, you know, we need to look at, we certainly can. To address the last question about competition, the City of Kingman, for residential customers in our regulations, we are the only provider, and customers... Residential customers are required to utilize the city's residential service. Commercial customers do have the option to use other vendors. So, I hope that answers any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Moline, council? Comments? Counselor Savage?
Going to the technology and the different-sized cans, if we waited till 2027, which would be the threshold on that 45 days, would that give us ample time to figure something out?
Councilman Savage, I appreciate that question. And I think that waiting until 2027, we might not want to wait until 2027, but I think that if the direction of the council might be that they want to evaluate something different like that, then we would definitely want to take some time and look at that. And I don't think that the increase would be so large. Obviously, we're going to assume that there are going to be reduced costs, right? I mean, I just showed that. However, if the direction of the council times to do something different and do the two times per week, at that point, it would be a larger increase than today, but certainly we can wait. It is not necessary today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselors, daily?
This may not be a question for you, but it might be because you've probably already asked these questions. I think it's curious that all cities offer once a week except for us, and I see that they have... That most have recycling as well. So, I can say, for my family of four, we could certainly live with once a week, especially if we had recycling, and we could offset, you know, any extra trash by putting it in a recycling bin or taking it to a recycling center. So, my question is, why are we doing twice a week when all the other cities are doing once a week? Is it just because of flies and things like that? Or how did we get here and how did everyone else go to once a week?
So, I will speak to that, but there might be more history that I don't have, and I would certain... I've got great subject matter experts, right?
He's already up. He's coming.
So, I would think, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but although the cities aren't offering twice-per-week solid waste pickup, they are offering two-times pickup because you're able to get rid of some of that recycling as well. So, there are still two times. It's just different type of product, right? Whereas, right now, everything is going into the can. So, similar, right? Just different, different product. But, Rob?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. I think, you know, the Arizona Administrative Code requires twice-a-week trash service. It was a provision that the County Health Department would approve of it, that you could get a variance from that to do once a week, and some of the rural communities did that. I think what happened was that when curbside recycling became more common, you know, those were... Those variances were a lot easier to get because they counted that as the second pickup of the week. You know, you had your trash one day a week, and you had your recycling another day of the week. So, I think historically, you know, it was twice a week in Arizona. There was a process you could go through, but then when recycling became more popular, that's kind of how they... How it evolved to the way it is in a lot of these other communities now.
Okay. And since you're here, my other question, if it's okay with you.
Of course.
Is I could see there might be some problems with going to once a week, and you'd have people that would just pile up, you know, the trash, and they would need more than one can. Do we, as a city, have the ability to force a customer to upgrade either to a second can or a larger can if they're habitually just creating a mess and stacking up their trash outside the can or anything like that? Would we have some control, you know, in a household that maybe was producing way too much trash for once a week?
You know, we haven't done too much of that kind of enforcement. We've tried to do that education, you know, when we... If we have a household that's continually overfilling cans, you know, they go to get dumped, and our drivers are getting out and picking up all the extra material and re-dumping it again. We've tried to do that education. We really haven't... Haven't attempted a whole lot of enforcement on that because it's kind of a... You know, there is language in the utility regulations, but, you know, I guess we focused on the education part of it.
And does that work?
Some. Some. But, you know, we have certain times of the year, you know, the week after Thanksgiving, the week after Christmas. It's crazy out there, and, you know, all these cans are overfilled. So, you know, there are places, going back to the kind of the pay-as-you-throw program is what they call some of these, where they have variable rates for different usage, and they do them different ways. There's some in a few of the states and in Asia and Europe where, you know, you either have a set number of bags you get, you have a number of, you know, tags you pay for, and, you know, that's all recorded when it's picked up on how much you're generating. I've never... I don't have familiarity with that system. I've just read about it. You know, I think there are... You know, there can be issues with it, but, you know, obviously, there's issues with the way that we're doing it now, too, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Walker?
Yeah, Rob, the other cities that offer recycling, is that recycling included in that monthly charge, or is there an extra cost?
Well, usually, it's factored into their rate study.
Okay. So, it would be included in all these fees we're seeing from other cities?
Generally, yes.
Okay. My other question is, I know, I don't think we offer it now, but do... Is there a larger can available for residential? I mean, what would the next size be?
They can get a second can. They're paying the full rate again for that second can.
Right now, you're paying full rate? But it looks like on here, it'd be seven... Was it $7?
$7.50.
For the extra can, okay. So, there's no option to buy bigger cans in the future?
No, just because we're trying to standardize the cans for our trucks and, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I just... I appreciate your comment about the once-a-week. In the enforcement, I mean, I could see some people not taking advantage of the extra can that they would have to pay for. So, I was curious about any kind of enforcement. I am favorable to the once-a-week. I'm favorable, obviously, to decreasing rates. I just wanted to make sure that the financial solvency, that graph that you showed us that takes us out to 29, if we went to once a week and we decreased rates, would we still... Will still be solvent through 29? Sorry, Rob.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And that is a great question because it's something new, right? This is a new type of service. There are a lot of assumptions involved. We're assuming people are going to get second cans. We're assuming there's going to be a certain amount of revenue generated from that. So, I can answer that question that, yes, I believe so, but until we get a year under our belt to see really what the actual experience is, I don't know what that looks like the next year.
So, with that being... Go ahead.
Oh, go... No, you finish.
With that being said, I'm almost hesitant to decrease the rate because we don't want to be here two years from now, asking for a rate increase, not only a rate increase, but a rate increase and then some. So, I'm wondering, best-case, worst-case scenario, could we decrease the rate but maybe be conservative in a decrease in the rate?
Vice Mayor, absolutely.
Okay.
I am comfortable with that.
Okay. So, instead of going down to the $18, maybe we could look at once a week, and... But we could still decrease, but not decrease to the 18. We could, you know, give a small decrease. It wouldn't be an increase. So, I think that would be amiable to the public. Counselor Staley?
I just wonder about the survey that you had mentioned. I know you want a decision from us tonight, but if we... If a majority of us were interested in this once-a-week pickup, would we have time to do a survey and to sort of change gears and shift it and look at really doing it once a week? And we'd need the approval from the county as well. So, we would need a little bit of time. What would that look like?
Sure. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Staley. So, the timing of this, if I may, City Manager Walsh, and please pipe in, but remember, we're going to be looking at recycling service in just a few months as well, and that may change things, too. So, the timing is good if we're able to sit down to send out a survey, and it's just a recommendation, just for consideration for you, to make sure that, again, you can evaluate what the customers have to say. But then, we can also maybe incorporate that into what we're going to bring back to you for recycling. You can look at the big picture as a whole, and maybe instead of waiting another full year to put rates into effect for solid waste, we maybe implement those rates when we look at the water rates and do something like that. So, I think we're fine if we delay a few months. Certainly, we wouldn't want to delay longer because, again, the increase could be much larger.
And I could support that if that's the council's wishes. I would rather have some input from our citizens. I mean, we've heard that, you know, a rate increase is not what they're looking for, obviously, but I am very curious to know what the public thinks about going from twice-a-week to once-a-week with an extra option to purchase a can, additional. Yes, Counselor Savage?
And we're just talking residential now, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Counselor Dykens?
Some of the comments, we're dealing with seniors. What is the population? What kind of percentage do we have in Kingman that really are seniors?
So, I want to say that over 65, I actually have this, and I think I'm pretty close. Over 65 is about 25% of our population. I know we've got economic development in the back. They might have a better number, be able to give a nod if I'm close, but I think it's about that number.
Mr. Bratley, would you like to come forward?
It's 31.88%.
Okay. So, much higher.
Good catch. It's in our presentation from Retail Coach. Yeah. Thank you.
And that's over 65?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll have you back later.
Thanks, Bennett.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Dykens? Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to hold off and get a survey out on resident. Ordinance 1950.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Is that... Did you want to add to that, or...
If I may, just a question. As far as public noticing is probably a question for Carl, where we had a 60-day notice in order to get to this meeting, would it be preferential if we set a date in order to reconsider this item so that we could work towards that as far as publication and noticing?
Well, depends. I think the problem is, you could do that, but you also have to get the data before, and you... I would hate to say you're going to set a date and then not have the data in that timeframe.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Walsh. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Ms. Annie, would you grab the mayor, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had to clean up my candy wrapper mess in there that I left, so...
I have, there's still some.
There is. I... There's a four... Sampling of four different kinds, and I sampled each one. So, there's still plenty of candy for everybody. Thank you. And of course, if there are those who would like to leave because of the discussion on the trash issue, we're done with that. You're more than welcome to be excused if you'd like. Moving on to item number one, appointment. item number one, appointments. Uh, 1A Board and Commission appointments. A number of appointments to city commissions and boards are expiring at the end of the year, leaving a number of vacancies. Staff has advertised for and received applications for those openings. The following commissions have vacancies and require, require appointments. Planning and Zoning Commission, 3. Economic Development Advisory Commission, 2. Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission, 4. Municipal Utility Commission, 5. Heritage Preservation Commission, 3. Clean City Commission, 4. And Board of Adjustment, 2. Included in the item are the applications for the various commissions. Residency and voter registration status have been verified. All appointments will be for a term of December to, from, of December 31st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028. Per ASA, Arizona Vice Statute 38-431.03A1, the city council may enter into executive session to review the commission applications. Um, council discretion. Counsel, I would suggest.
May.
Oh, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion. We go into executive session.
I'll second.
We have a second. So we are going to executive session. Uh, there is one caveat on all this. There are, of course, we have applications for, from a number of different people that we are going to discuss. And Tim, what was the guidance on that you wanted?
Carl? Sure. If, if, if someone has put in an application and we're going to discuss in the e-session, if they don't want that discussion in e-session, they should let us know now so that then we can have the discussion about their individual application here in public. And you've made a motion and a second, but you have not voted going e-session.
True.
Don't forget.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, you should ask if there's anybody that objects to discussion.
Oh, yes. Is there anybody, once again, per our, our legal counsel, anybody that has an issue with what we're going to do? Once again, you're welcome to stay. This might be a little, take a little while. We are going to try to do, get this done as quick as possible, but, uh, I, once again tonight, I say thank you for your patience. Once again, welcome and we're, we appreciate all of you staying here to do, in our chambers. And first and most important, I want to thank all of you, all those who turned their applications in for this, for the different commissions. It actually made it quite difficult. When we all received the email with all the information, there was a lot of applications turned in. And so we appreciate your desires to serve on these different commissions. Um, and of course, there are some commissions that still need people to turn in applications for, and we would invite you to consider those if you didn't get placed on to the commission you wanted to be. So I'm going to make a motion. Um, we are first starting with planning and zoning and we all support Elizabeth Goss of being on there, but because it is her third term, it needs to be a super majority. So I make a motion that we've, um, have Elizabeth Goss continue on planning and zoning commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. What we're doing too is I'm, there are certain people that, that apply that require super majority, so I'm going to take care of those first. Um, next for our Airport and Industrial Park, um, I make the motion that we, um, keep David Am Spoker on that commission. I need a second.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second for Mr. Am Spoker staying on Airport and Industrial Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Heritage Preservation Commission, Nikki Terleski. This is her third term on there and we, and I would like to support her continuing on that commission. Uh, I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. We have a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then finally, as far as our last super majority, um, on our Board of Adjustments, um, C. Russell is his third term also, and I make that motion that we keep, uh, Mr. Russell on the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second that.
Mr. Walker, thank you. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Going back to the top of the list, and we're going to do this all in one motion, so I'm going to read these names for these different commissions that we, as a council, are comfortable with having these individuals on these commissions. Uh, for planning and zoning, we would like to have, um, Deborah Sixta and Scott McCoy, um, be on those commissions. On economic present development, Martha Lewis and Ben Leparn. I'm making, I'm sorry, I'm making this motion that these individuals be on this commission, these commissions. On our Airport and Industrial Park, Tamara Seaton Cooper, Paul Gaines, and John Stutzman. On our municipal, municipal utility commission, Kenneth Horner, Greg Rayber, Colin Patillo, and Shane Retberg.
John Bennett.
And, and John Bennett. Yes, thank you, Ms. Counselor Walker. Uh, those five for municipal utility commission. Um, on, on our Heritage Preservation Commission, Donna Peterson and Joyce Lucero. And then for our Clean City Commission, Kathy Hilton and Changus Eric. And then finally, for our Board of Adjustments, M., our Ed Baumgartner. Um, I make that motion once again for all those individuals to be on these various commissions. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Once again, I want to reiterate and thank everybody for, who has turned applications in to be on these different commissions and serving our city. We oftentimes know it's volunteering time and we also recognize the fact that some of the commissions have not had a chance to meet even maybe in a year because there just hasn't been coming up. And we appreciate your patience for still wanting to have your name considered for that commission because you know Murphy's Law. As soon as we were to take you off there, something will happen. You'll be one of, it will, we'll have a meeting on that pres, that commission. So once again, we'd like to thank everybody for actively choose to serve the city. Okay. I think. Moving on on our agenda, um, 1B, Council Liaison Assignments. Annual Council Commission Liaison Assignment Documents is attached for council review and acceptance. Staff recommends approval. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, based on, uh, last year's assignments, we adjusted the, we rotated the assignments for the council members. There were a couple of, of, uh, minor changes, um, to that just based on, uh, either previous experience in a, in a, or previous tenure on a certain commission or based on, um, how do you put it? Uh, based on, based on the, the, the commission. But for the most part, these have just been rotated through. Um, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Have you all had a chance to take a look at?
And, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I apologize, just wanted to add a little bit, uh, more to it. Actually, if I may, I'll turn over to Carl, uh, on a little bit of, uh, information as far as what the, the purpose of the liaison, um, for those commissions and, and, and that role.
So, uh, the liaison is, uh, basically sent as a representative, an observer from the council with the boards and commissions. Uh, obviously, the intent is for, for you folks to be there to see what's happening on those board and commissions, to report back to the council what's going on. Uh, I know there's been, uh, a kind of a migration from, uh, the liaisons sitting in the audience to kind of coming up on the, the dais. I don't know if that's really necessary. Sometimes that encourages, uh, maybe an active participation that may steer the direction of the board or commission's, uh, discussion. Uh, and we need to make sure that as a liaison, it's, 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 I don't want to say it's not, not your commission, but it's not a commission that you need to be directing what to do. It's more you just to represent if they have questions for council or for council to, to, to understand what's going on with those commissions. That's just what the standard is for that. Uh, obviously, council can, uh, choose to make whatever decisions they want to make.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on your assignments? Now, Carl, um, I don't remember in years past that us ever having to vote on this.
Uh, we never have. I think it was always just kind of an assignment done by the mayor in the past.
Correct.
Um, I think tonight you're just kind of asking if everybody's okay with this, uh, but it's, it's kind of always been the mayor's prerogative to make some of those, those adjustments, isn't he?
So would you like us to make a motion to make it all official?
If you.
Since it's on our agenda?
It's on your agenda. If you want to do that, you can do that.
Okay. Do I need to read what everybody's been assigned to or probably not? I don't need to.
No, I think it's pretty.
Okay. Real good.
Straightforward.
So everybody is comfortable with their, uh, commission assignments? Okay. Um, I'd like to make, make a motion then that we accept, um, our council assignments as has been stated in our documents.
I'll second.
We have, we have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Dykens, we'll give it to you. There's a second.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. Item number two, Call to the Public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Ms. Meredith, do we have anybody?
Mayor, we have not had anybody that, uh, signed up to address the council this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to item number three, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, we've all had a chance to take a look at these items A through H. Are there any questions or anything that needs to be pulled for discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to have a, a motion then approving item number three, Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, 4A, we took care of already. Item number five, New Business. Um, 5A, Discussion on Creation of Golf Commission. Staff has received a request to bring this to council for discussion and possible action on the formation of a golf commission, and it's up to council discretion. Turn some time over to our city manager, Tim Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item, there's been some, uh, interest expressed in creating a golf commission. There had been a, a golf commission previously. It was then, um, included in with the, the PARG Commission, parks, aquatics, recreation, and golf. Um, there has been recently some, some desire to, to pull golf back out and create its own commission. So this item is, is basically a discussion item and, and action if, if council would like to create that commission.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Counsel, any comments or discussion on this? I'm sure, well, I'm sure there's lots of discussion. So let's start that. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I, I brought this to.
Oh, Counselor Walker, could you make sure you, actually, when I was back there, I was able to watch what was going on. And I did want to invite all of us, including Tim and Carl, to make sure you speak in closer to your mics. Thank you.
Yeah, I originally, I think I brought this, I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but brought it to our manager's attention that I think we need to go back to having a golf committee or a commission. Um, I think the golf course has too much stuff going on that when it gets to the parks and rec or parks and swimming aquatics, it's just too much for it. And, and I would suggest that we start a new commission and get it back the way it was.
Well, and our golf course is a jewel of our city.
It is.
Unfortunately, we're going to have a wall built because of the construction by ADOT, which covers up our, our golf course, but.
You won't have to hit any more trucks.
This is true. But it is a jewel in our city.
Can we raise our billboard?
That's what we need to do. Yes. Um, that's a Tim question.
Carl question.
Okay. Anyway, uh, Counselor Walker, I would agree with you. Um, I think it, and it's more citizen input. We all are interested in hearing from our citizens and it adds that, another, another voice for them. So I appreciate that. Yes, Counselor?
I think it's an absolutely great idea. I've been talking with Mike about the golf course on a few different things and I'd be happy to be the liaison for that.
Okay. So noted. Vice Mayor?
I support this as well. I would like to see its makeup, uh, be predominantly golfers. I think that would be appropriate. Um, so I, I definitely could support this as well. And I'm in favor.
Okay. Real good. Any comments from this side?
I just have a question. How often would this committee meet?
Mike?
Good ques, good. At least four times a year, depending on need.
Every month?
Yes. In the past, we met quarterly when it was a commission until 2017 when it merged with the golf.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Miersman?
Yeah, with, are, your events are picking up, correct? And the coord, your events and the coordination of the golf course and all that, would you think once a month might work or every other month, six times a year?
You, you know, we could start out with quarterly or every other month, what, whatever the council would decide.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Miersman?
I'd like every other month.
Yeah?
I think, yeah, just to see. I think their agenda might be large in the beginning and then maybe if it needs to be adjusted, then it could be adjusted.
Well, and you're an avid golfer, aren't you? No?
I do golf, yes.
You do golf. Okay. Real good. Um, can we have a motion then forming a golf commission?
So, oh, I'm sorry, Carl. You can, you can make a motion, direct staff to draft a, an ordinance to create that commission.
Oh, that's true.
But I would, I, I'll be able to draft the ordinance to create that commission. Mike and I have talked a little bit about what we had in the past and what we need to do just to amend our, our city codes. And then that would also allow us to pull the G out of PARG and put a T in there for Councilwoman Staley for Trails. Because that was the first thing I thought of.
That's, that's a good idea, though. Okay. Thanks, Carl. So we're, I think we all, staff, you have an idea of what we, what we want. So that's great. And it shouldn't take very long. I know this, we've had one before, so it shouldn't take very long to get this back before us.
Yeah, it should have it by July.
Great.
I'm kidding.
I know, I know, Carl.
Like January, you said?
It starts with a J, right? That's right. That's why I understood it was January. Okay. Real good. Item number 5B, Exception for Connection to Sewer, APN 322-18-085. Larry Matthews applied for an exception for sewer extension for his property located on Roma Road at Assessor's Parcel Number 322-18-085. The property is located less than 200 feet from an eight-inch sewer line. The utility regulations require that the sewer be extended across the front edge resulting in an estimated total extension length of 235 feet. The utility regulations require sewer connection if the public sewer is within 500 feet of the property. Staff recommended denial of the exception. The municipal utility commission recommended approval. Um, so there we have it. Um, municipal utilities liaison for that. Oh, wait, Mike, we'll turn some time over to you first.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. Uh, there should be some attachments on the agenda item that would help you understand what's going on. I, I think Annie's trying to help me get those pulled up. Um, I mean, you know, without the, uh, attachments or the slide, the, the facts of, uh, the case are right there. It's, the sewer connection is less than 200 feet from the property corner. Oh, there we go. Um, so it's this parcel here. It's the 084 parcel. This distance from, uh, where the sewer is now to the property corner is less than 200 feet. Uh, the rules we currently have are anything within 500 feet is required to connect. Um, the total length of the extension would be 235 feet to get across the front edge of the property. When we discussed this at MUC, uh, the main concern was that there were feelings that the chances are very low that the applicant would get a payback. Um, that was the main reason for them granting the exception. Um, I, as the city engineer, it's always my policy to want to deny the exceptions because, uh, obviously it's better for the city for them to connect to sewer. Uh, does anyone have any questions?
Counselor, this, Counselor Ward first?
Yeah.
And Counselor Walker.
Yeah. Is that the only house in that whole neighborhood that will be on sewer? Looks like it.
The green parcels are already on sewer, are connected to the sewer. Um, this, this part of Vista Bella was actually out in the county when it was first built and then it got. And then it got annexed in the 90s, and so the southern portion of the subdivision actually has sewer. It's just this northern portion that doesn't.
So, the green parcels?
The green parcels are.
Across the street from him are on sewer?
These two parcels here and this parcel are on sewer. His parcel is here, so his neighbors are not on sewer. I want to add that the homes that are his neighbors were built in either the late 90s or the early 2000s. So, they have septic systems that are fairly old, somewhere between, you know, 20 years old, 20, 30 years old. The average lifespan of the septic system is in the range of 20 to 30 years old, so they're probably getting pretty close. However, again, the feeling from MUC was that since his chances of a payback were low that they were going to go ahead and grant the exception.
Counselor Ward, that answers your question?
Yeah. I, that's all I got.
Okay, Counselor Walker?
That was part of my question, is I just wanted to verify that the lots in green were on sewer, and the ones on red are on septic.
Yes.
And, you know, I count like 27 lots that are still on the street that I, are all these built out? Are there any empty lots?
Most of the lots have, are improved.
Yeah.
But there are a handful of vacant lots that are kind of scattered out.
But there's 27 lots that eventually could tie into this. You know, I know we've done exceptions before where it's, they were on larger lots, and they were coming a lot farther. So, I personally am kind of leaning that we need to deny the exception.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Counselor?
Where that, what I'm looking at on the map there, where those orange blocks are at the end of the green, is that where the sewer line, where you're saying he needs to put the sewer line? So, there's only two lots between him and the end of the sewer?
It's rotated, that's what happened. Okay. I wondered what happened. So, the one thing is, is where the extension happens, the only lots that are eligible for a payback are the ones that have frontage where the extension happens. So, it would be just this lot, this lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot. That's the only place that he's going to get a payback.
So, five lots total?
Five lots total.
Right. Okay.
One thing I did point out at the MUC meeting was actually if he did get paybacks, some of these other lots, like this one in particular, and this one, would actually pay more into the sewer extension than he would at the end of the day, so.
And the fact is, is that, for example, that big lot, that big corner lot, 062, as we are seeing all throughout the city, there is lots of infill going on, and lots are being bought very quickly for infill. So, I would think in the next five to 10 years, that could happen, that would happen. I would think five years or less. So, that's something to consider. Okay? Vice Mayor?
My, I am in favor of denial as well, because, like you said, they're already 20 years, it's been improved for 20 years. The payback is 20 years, correct? So, I could see 062 being purchased and improved. They would have to connect, right? So, he would get something paid back. And then, you know, at the end of, you know, even just prior to those 20 years expiring of his payback, you're looking at close to 40 years, but these houses have been there. And I don't know many septic tanks that have outlasted 40 years, or even between, you know, 35 and 40. So, I too am in favor of denying the request for the exception and having the applicant hook up.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay. Can we have a motion then? I would assume, I think that we sort of all have the sentiment that we're leaning towards denial. Can we have a motion then of supporting staff on this one and denying the exception?
So moved.
We have a motion, can we have a second? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Counselor Ward is opposed. Okay, so noted, thank you, Counselor. Thanks, all of us, motion does carry, though. Okay, thank you, Mike. Item number six, department reports. Six A, the Retail Coach update. Manager Walsh?
I'll turn it over to Sylvia if I may.
Sylvia, I apologize.
I'm the manager now. Good evening, evening. So, tonight, we have an update from Caleb Wilson of Retail Coach to you to tell all of you what we've been doing this last six months, and even more. We've actually been working with Retail Coach since 2023. Since we've been working with Retail Coach on, which is, helps us with retail attraction for Kingman. They've done quite a bit with helping us going to various conferences, setting up meetings with various commercial developers and retailers, providing key demographic reports we need, and just basically working even with local commercial property owners and plaza owners. When there's suites that become open, we connect together with them, or even they might have to be in the plazas, they can just be a commercial building, too, that when we have a, say, something vacate, we work with the owners to try to bring something back in as soon as possible. Some of the most recent successes are Marshalls and our upcoming El Pollo Loco, and that's a situation where we did work and team together with, when Profit left the one building and got with the property owner and said, "How can we help you?", and met on site. And we have some good things coming up this next quarter in January 2025, so that's a good thing. So, with them, they're an extension of our team. They're able to attend conferences nationwide that we don't actually physically attend and continue to market Kingman. And that's probably, I'll leave most of the rest for Caleb to give an update. I think that's all I have for the moment, so I'll just pass it on to Caleb, and let him give us a good update. Thank you.
Caleb, welcome. Caleb, welcome.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. Good to be back, good to see you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. You know, it's crazy that it's the end of the year, but at the same time, you know, it's been a great 2024, and, you know, I definitely look forward to what's going to happen in 2025 for everybody. You know, the market itself continues to adapt in a lot of ways, but it's also continuing to grow in a lot of great ways as well. Wanted to just take an opportunity to give a little update since my visit last time. You know, as Sylvia mentioned, our partnership started back in, you know, the middle of 2023, and, you know, here we are into 2024, you know. Just the example that I'll just speak to real quick before I get into the presentation, you know, El Pollo Loco, you know, that's a target that we had, you know, previously that the team had worked on here at Kingman. But that was, you know, a target that we had on our original list. You know, from then, you know, kind of to announcement, we're looking at around that 18-month mark that we typically see on a deal. You know, for what we know to work, you know, it does take about that long for somebody located in a community. So, we currently are looking at other targets in many different sectors, and we'll kind of talk through that here in a little bit. But for those who don't know, you know, in the audience or here on the call, the Retail Coach is a, you know, an advisor to communities across the US. In Arizona specifically, we work in a couple of communities down in Phoenix, and then here in Kingman. So, we do not have any other clients that we work with in Arizona. Kingman is an excellent client. We've enjoyed a partnership to date and looking forward to the future. Our company is about 25 years old, and, you know, within our team that is working on this project, we've got about 35 years' experience working towards recruitment and attraction for Kingman. So, but I'll get into the presentation, and then I think it'll be shared on your end, I believe, or would you rather me share it?
Caleb, if you could share, that would be fantastic, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So, I do always like to start out for those in the audience that may not know kind of how we got here. So, speaking to a trade area, this is a typical marketing piece that we would use the majority of the time when speaking with retailer developer, or, you know, a specific broker that represents one of these brands. So, when we say retail, we're talking retailer, we're talking restaurants, we're talking hospitality, or developer. So, encompassed on all that, in the retail sector of the market, a lot of folks will think about, you know, okay, they're just looking at what the city's population is and who that demographic base is, when in fact, that's not the case, and instead, they are looking at what the retail trade area is. So, early on, we created this polygon, and the sense adapted that a little bit to accommodate for Kingman's growth. So, in 2024, this is the hand-drawn polygon for the trade area for Kingman. And looking at that information, we can extract the data within that polygon, giving us what the primary customer is for the city of Kingman. So, a lot of us have seen this information before, but just wanted to show how we got here. This year in 2024, you know, we're looking at 8,452 people within this primary trade area. So, this is on a bad day, you know, a normal case, you know, week, and just what can these retailers and restaurants expect on a primary basis? And that's going to be your 80,000 mark. And then they're also can look at, you know, those other demographic highlights in that report that we share with them. Looking at a secondary trader, this is what we consider, you know, maybe not your all-the-time customer, but this is something that probably, you know, contributes to the majority of the makeup of the sales within the city of Kingman from a consumer basis on the retail side. So, obviously, this is reaching a little bit further, down past Mojave Valley, you know, looking further east on I-40. And within that area, you overdouble that amount at 162,000. So, this is another great conversational piece. Again, just touching on this as, you know, what data we use whenever we go out and market Kingman in these conferences, in these phone calls, meetings, et cetera. This is the main data that we're using as a conversation piece. Incomes really stay about the same, you know, between the two reports. This is them side by side, just for reference. Not a whole lot of changes within that. There's a little bit of change in age group as far as kind of that older demographic. Obviously, it gets quite a bit smaller, and whenever you look at that primary trade area, that's something that's been called out, you know, in many conversations, which is a good thing. You know, not that it skews the data or, you know, for what brands are looking for, but it helps having that kind of more middle ground on that median age for expanding brands. So, these are the two next to each other. You know, if anybody needed to look at this a little bit deeper, we've got this broken down into even more of a, you know, specifics if somebody needed to look at that. As I get into this recruitment update, and as our team has gone through, you know, continued recruitment since we started, wanted to just be transparent today. I think that, you know, sometimes we talk about, you know, we're looking at targeting these kinds of brands. You know, we want to mention some of those today as to who we're targeting and who we're having, you know, active, you know, targets with in each of these sectors, and who we feel are great matches, who have been great matches, and ones who we might be looking at going forward for the city of Kingman, and the opportunities that they could look at to be here. As we have these conversations, it can be a little different way. So, as we've talked about, we had these conversations at either these conferences. You know, we are in person a lot, on-site tours. We talk with these folks who represent multiple regions. And so, a lot of times, Kingman can come up, you know, in a text message, LinkedIn, et cetera. So, you know, among our network, it reaches pretty far. And there's a lot of ways that we can have these conversations that pertain to the city of Kingman. So, I'm just going to go in sections, going to kind of name some of them, and kind of what we're going after as a team. Specifically, looking at off-price retailers. So, this is the one in the retail market right now that has just been really on fire since COVID. You know, speaking to that consumer that appreciates that off-price discount opportunity. You know, a lot of those names that you hear a lot of the times, like the TJX companies, like the TJ Maxx, the Marshalls, you know, those groups are capitalizing very well on the consumer demand that's happened since COVID. They've really gotten efficient about their businesses. A lot of them have right-sized their footprint as well. So, a name here that you see, Burlington, you know, that's used to be a much larger store, you know, just as an example. I think a lot of these brands have adapted to what the market needs and how to be efficient with their space. So, through that, this is definitely one of the more successful sectors. Just some brands that we're targeting currently would be Burlington Five Below, Belrosen Famous Footwear. When we name these brands, this is because of a handful of things. It could be, they're expanding in Arizona, they've talked about Kingman before. You know, or we see them, just based on our conversation, being a good fit into the city, and feel as though it's a good target to have. So, discount supermarket chain. So, this has been another really high-growing sector across the US. Definitely growing quite a bit in the Phoenix Valley as well. You know, there's a great amount of demand, and we know that your Walmart does extremely well just based on cell phone visits itself, which is what a lot of the data that we use to create a lot of our reports is, through that cell phone data. And then additionally, you know, we know from the sales, just based on conversations that we've had with regional managers of the Walmart side, we know that this Walmart does some of the top percentile in the state. So, targeting one brand currently, have had a conversation with them quite a while. Really, I think we're towards the latter half of that target landing. You know, it takes some time. You know, these are large conversations, these are 40- to 50-year plans that some of these brands are making. And so, they need to do it right. You know, it's got to be the right opportunity, it's got to be, you know, we've got to run every sort of data, you know, analysis behind it. So, that's, you know, the reason why it might take, you know, a little bit, but we're feeling really good about some of these leads that we've had. Another one that we're staying on top of is grocery outlet. You know, the group out of California has mentioned to us many times that they're looking to sometime soon expand into the neighboring states. So, we've got a really good relationship with them, with our California clients and our communities that we represent there. So, we're looking forward to working with them going forward as they expand in Arizona. Warehouse-style grocery, you know, Smart and Final has been a huge target for us in the past. You know, continue to keep them updated on growth that Kingman's experiencing. I think that's a lot of what our partnership does, is keeping these site selectors, these brands, brokers up to speed on what's happening in real time, because a lot of them have a lot of other things going on, right? So, having these consistent conversations, keeping them updated is extremely important and vital to how quickly Kingman can grow, because the last thing we want to do is for somebody to forget about what's happening in Kingman, and then, you know, revisit it a year later, just when we could have had, you know, months of conversations leading up to this that would have otherwise been wasted. Casual restaurants, you know, this is the fun segment that a lot of people love to look at. I think it's another one, it's almost like a grocer conversation, because these brands that have these national chains. It, it's, it's almost like a grocer conversation because, um, these brands that, that have these national chains, you know, they, these are 30-year decisions. Um, you know, it, it's really important for them to do it right, um, to come into the market at the right time. Um, some brands have mentioned us in the past. They're, they're not sure if, if they need to be the first ones. Um, others are, are ready. You know, it just may not have been the right operator, you know, so, um, these are the brands today that, that we're targeting on, on the casual side, uh, in addition to a couple of other new ones that have, have come across, um, just in the last couple of weeks that have mentioned expansion in Arizona. Um, and so that's, that, that segment. And I think that, you know, it, it's, it's a tedious task because I think that, um, you know, some of those folks, I think it's getting them to the market. I think that's been our focus as well, is trying to make sure that they're coming to visit Kingman to see what's there today and that, that they should have already been there. Um, so that's been a huge focus on, on this segment is, is trying to encourage them to, to visit the market. Um, uh, just in, just in that sector. Um, travel centers have been a new conversation for, for us, uh, as, as, you know, I-40 has, has a great amount of travel on it as it is and, and probably has had, had some conversations in the past, but with the, with the interchange, uh, and then the Kingman Crossing Interchange as well, um, being kind of a high topic of conversation as of late. You know, we've had a lot more conversations on that side as well. Um, so it, it has become a huge focus. Uh, while travel centers don't always come to mind as, as a huge driver, um, it is a great sales tax generator. You know, there, there are, you know, strategic brands that we'd like to target, uh, that, you know, would, would be great for, for a community. Um, so we, we need to be a little bit strategic about who, who, who those conversations are with, um, and how we can be helpful uh, to those groups as well. Um, looking, looking at some of these others, you know, fast casuals, another really high-growing sector. Um, I, I mentioned Tropical Smoothie in the past. They do have secured land here in Kingman along Stockton Hill. Um, the franchisee does still plan to, to develop that site. Um, this is somebody that, that we've worked with since the beginning. Um, you know, offer any assistance that we need to when the time comes. Um, and enlisted some other brands here who are currently looking at sites or have asked to, you know, you know, keep them up to date on, on new opportunities that, that, that come up. Um, so, you know, great sector, love that sector as well, really, you know, high amount of sales compared to some of these, you know, quick service brands that we'll mention in a second. Um, but again, this is, and I'll speak about it here in a little bit, but having this mix between kind of this fast casual and, and quick service restaurant or the, the fast food segment, uh, is important because when these casual restaurants like your Olive Gardens, your Texas Roadhouse, um, when they look, they're going to look at how well is, is the Taco Bell doing on the street? You know, how well is McDonald's doing down there? Because they're going to understand how well is that, that McDonald's doing compared to the average unit? So if their average unit volume is $2 million and this McDonald's is only doing about 1.5, um, you know, it, it, it's not, there's going to be a reason for them to question what's wrong with, is it, is it the site for that brand? Is it the market? Um, so it's important that we continue to stay up to speed on some of these, you know, lower segments, um, to make sure that that base is really there and then you can bring in the right mix going forward. Um, Hobby Lobby's been a huge focus for us. Uh, of course, they've looked at the market for a long time. Um, there just hasn't been a space for them. You know, they are aware that, that we're, you know, speaking with them on new development opportunities as well. Um, great operator, great business, um, one that we want to keep, keep in mind going forward. Um, like I mentioned, quick service restaurants, one that we definitely don't want to forget about. Um, some people think it just kind of naturally comes when, at the same time, they're taking a lot of, you know, time and effort to make sure that they make right decisions as well. Um, you know, so we're keeping a, a, you know, a decent focus on, on these groups as well. And then ones that are here, they're wanting to expand, you know, we're, we're keeping up with them, them too, uh, because that's, it's important. If, if a brand's doing well, we want them to be successful. Um, and if they need to look at additional locations, then, then we're, we're more than happy to help with that. Um, and they have come to us in the past and are coming to us, you know, as, you know, those conversations evolve. Um, Sam's Club, um, you know, this is, this is one that we've gotten a lot lately from many communities, you know, from the wholesale club side. Sam's Club has not really come out just yet, uh, with, with, um, public plans of, of how they're going to roll out their, their new stores. Um, however, their, their brokers and, and their team have continued to keep up to speed with, with us, uh, with other communities and, and about Kingman as well as to what opportunities are out there. So they're still vetting opportunities, um, just as a brand, that they're not expanding a whole lot at this point and, 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 you know, expressing what those plans are going to be. So, um, while that's not happening as fast as we like from the brand, we are continuing to keep in touch with them uh, in addition to Costco. Uh, so both of those are, are high focuses, uh, as always. Um, but those are, those are obviously another situation where long-term term plans. Um, I won't touch on this too much, but you know, in the past, uh, year, it's, it's been about five conferences that, that have, have been within the region that pertains to Kingman that we've attended. Um, during these conferences, we set up meetings, whether it's just us, that's, that's in, in-person attendance, uh, about Kingman, or if, uh, the team here, here at the city or the EC is, is present, then we would have them, uh, in on those meetings and we will continue to, to do that, um, looking ahead, uh, just as an example, in Vegas, uh, May of '25. Um, so these are really, really important conferences. You know, you don't sign, you don't go there to sign deals. You don't get, you go there to get deals done. You go there to show a face, to show that, that we're ready to help, uh, with these brands as, as they look to locate in Kingman. Um, so it's important that, that we continue to, to have that presence there. I went a little fast, but I wanted to, to just, you know, kind of go into some of the details there. Um, you know, I know that it's, it's, it's been a long evening, so I, you know, wanted to keep it relatively, uh, short if I could, but, um, I also want to make sure that I'm, I'm addressing any questions that there are, uh, from the council or you, you mayor or vice mayor.
Thank you, Caleb, for that presentation. Counsel, any questions for Caleb? Okay. Thanks, Caleb. Sylvia?
Thank you.
Any questions for Sylvia since Sylvia is here in person? Okay. Thank you. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Counselor Walker?
Um, nothing tonight.
Counselor Savage? Since we won't have a meeting next week, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Counselor Ward? Counselor Staley? Counselor Dykens?
Uh, just letting you know that I attended the, uh, League of Arizona Cities and Towns for new mayors and council members. And that was eye-opening, at, to the least. So that was enjoyable. Uh, I do have one announcement that Saturday at 3:00 PM, the Mojave Community Choir and Orchestra is going to be performing their 2024 Holiday Concert. It's going to be at the College Park Community Center, I think is what they call it, on Jaggerson. So everybody's welcome to go.
Okay. Thank you for that announcement. Vice Mayor?
Um, I just had a couple of things. I did also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe, please be safe, New Year. Um, I also, uh, do believe there's two more performances of Elf that's left. Three more. Thank you, Counselor Staley. And I'm going to the Friday one and I am so excited to see Buddy. So, there you go.
There you go. Thank you. Uh, and me, and likewise, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year, and especially during this whole holiday season. Please be careful, be courteous. Um, and of course, let's always keep service in mind too, because that's what the holidays are all about. I do want to announce also our Parks, Parks Department and support them, a 24th Annual Kingman Polar Plunge. I don't know, have any of you done that? Clerk Meredith, no? I have. I did it a long time ago with my two boys. It's cold, but it was fun. And I survived, so I'm still here. Anyway, that is happening on, uh, January 1st. Right, Mike? Okay, at what time? Okay, at noon and of course Centennial Pool. Okay. So everybody get ready for who wants to do that. Bennett, I see you smiling. Are you going to do it? Okay. Anyway, that's a great event that our, our Parks Department, uh, is, is doing. And of course, as I mentioned in this flyer, it is increasing each year. I mean, it gets bigger and bigger. So I, I remember when I did it, it was down at the downtown pool. And, uh, of course, once again, now it's a Centennial Park Pool, a much bigger pool. It's a, it's a great event to go to. Um, that's all I have. So item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Counsel? Counselor Staley?
Uh, yes, I would like to request, uh, some information about changing the name of the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange back to Rattlesnake Wash Interchange. I've had several people, um, reach out to me to see if that was possible. The thought is that Rattlesnake Wash would be, um, catchier, be memorable and, um, Rancho Santa Fe is kind of generic. So if you could let us know how, what that process is, that'd be great.
I think there's even been something online already, a petition.
Oh, really? There's a petition?
Yes. So, but I'm sure we can get an update from staff about that. Great. Anything else, Counsel?
I do have a request. Um, I would like to have an update on the FAA, uh, land release, where we're at, where we're going, what's the plan, and how effective we've been. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Item number nine, executive session, nine A, Kingman Crossing Development Agreement. Staff requests the council to go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4 to discuss the Kingman Crossing Development Agreement, uh, discussion and/or action. Um, so can we have a motion of going to, into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Once again, everybody here in chambers, thanks for staying. It's been a long night already. We appreciate you being here. And, uh, we are going into executive session. Okay, let's end this meeting. Yes. Okay. We are back from executive session. We have been updated and it's still a work in progress. Uh, once again, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.